I've been meaning to tell you all something. Well, we're still a minute early. Oh, I have a different time on my watch, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for coming this evening to the city council meeting for this evening, and if you would all please join me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation this evening brought by Councilman Thompson. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
O'sh, gracious heavenly Father, we come before your throne with grace boldly but humbly, and we ask for your presence among us tonight. We ask for your blessings upon us. Father, we ask for guidance and direction as we look at the different things that we need to do and decide on in reference to the city and the well-being of the city. Father, we thank you for every employee, every citizen of this city. Thank you for blessing us. Thank you for the things that you're doing within us, and we thank you for that. Father, watch over us, guide us, and direct us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Well, it's one of my first honors this evening is always one of my highest honors is to present proclamations. And if I could have two, the two representatives from the National Magic Week representatives come forward? Come on, come on up.
They disappeared.
Yeah, they disappeared. Yeah, we'll put one of you on each side, kind of. And I'd appreciate it if both of you would introduce yourselves.
I'm Matt Gurley.
Magic Matt, and your experience?
I've been performing magic for almost...
Six hours?
Yeah, you are.
Next week.
I'm gonna say thirty-five years or so.
Wonderful.
Great.
Roger Miller, been actively in magic since the age of eight in Cub Scouts, off and on and all that, so...
Twelve years ago.
That's a few years ago, like eighty.
And... Gosh! And I understand you are a past president of the International Magicians?
Yes, International Brotherhood of Magicians was president in 'oh, five and six.
It's an honor to have both of you here today. I, I'm humbled by your presence. It's great to have this. I, I have been, I can't hardly do this with a mask on, I've been many places and walked into a, a small magic shop in, I believe it is in Nashville, Tennessee, and was walking in, just looking around as, you know, other people in our traveling group were looking at dress shops and things, and talked to the guy behind the counter, he's a young man. He asked, "Well, so where are you from?" We said, "Well, we're vacationing from Bonner Springs, Kansas," and he said, "Bonner Springs, Kansas? Do you know Roger Miller?" And I go, "Yeah, I grew up right next door to Roger. I, I know him, I know him," and he goes, "Oh, my goodness, he's, he's the president of the International Magicians Association." I go, "Yeah, yeah, I grew up right next door to him," so I'm humbled by the presence of, of famous people. But the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Society of American Magicians each year memorializes the death on October 31st, 1926, of Harry Houdini, past national president, and whereas professional and amateur magician members give generously of their time and talent for charitable purposes at hospitals, schools, military bases, churches, nursing homes, and et cetera, and whereas the Society of American Magicians Magic Endowment Fund has distributed over 500,000 in charitable giving to causes such as summer youth camp grants, hospital benefits, and college scholarships, and whereas magic is an ancient and delightful form of entertainment which continues to give pleasure to young and old, and whereas magic as a hobby has demonstrated itself to be a positive activity, and whereas the national president of the Society of American Magicians has declared that Halloween, October 31st, 2021, shall be National Magic Day, and the week beginning October 25th shall be National Magic Week. And now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 25th through 31st, 2021, as National Magic Week in the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas." Very good. And I'll shake your hand and give you this, and then I'll shake your hand. And I, I do, since we have the center stage here for just a minute, I thought I would let you guys see one of my favorite tricks that I was taught by David Copperfield some many years ago when I was about twenty-five years old, in a different career. And I magically, with the help of someone saying the magic word, can make this rubber band change places.
Abracadabra!
And it automatically goes from there.
And it jumped from two fingers to the other fingers. A wonderful trick.
He made mention that, yeah, exactly, but you made mention that it's a positive activity, and he taught that as part of a nationwide tour to occupational therapists to help with dexterity for people who have had a hand injury. So I, it, you would be surprised how much it has helped gain a little bit of acceptance in people.
It will.
Yeah. And with this week being Harry Houdini's anniversary of his passing and the long history of séances, with the rumored history of this building being perhaps haunted, I'm glad that we were able to have a part of it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can take that. All righty. Thank you, guys.
Well, since it is, it is Magic Week, so I would think some magic would be appropriate.
Yeah, since I didn't, I mean...
I, I think I'll stand over here.
You still have your watch?
Yeah. This is a, this is a civics class in Bonner Springs government. You know, our government here consists of many parts. You have the mayor and the council, that are elected and set the policies and such as that. And they have a staff, Sean, the city manager, you know, they take care of fixing potholes and doing all that. And also, the third group is the electorate. I mean, we're the ones that put you all in office, don't forget that. Now, we have these three parts of government. I'd like to demonstrate it with these three lengths of rope. We have a long, a medium, and a short. And I'm gonna ask you if you all would examine those ropes and make sure that they don't stretch or there's no trap doors or any way that they would come apart. Okay.
Perfectly normal rope. Perfectly normal.
We have your endorsements. So you might say, "Who's the most important in the city?" Well, if I was the, the mayor and the city council, I'd say, "Well, we're the most important. We make all the decisions. We decide the budget and all that stuff. Of course, you've got the city employees to take care of things, and then you've got people kind of out here." But if I was the city employees, I'd say, "Hey, who gets the work done? I mean, we're, we're the ones that do that." And of course, we answer to that group up there, and they're out there. But if I'm, and I am, part of the populace, I think we're the most important. And then we've got the city, because we ask the city employees to fix our potholes, and they do. And then the mayor, I mean, they only get together what, once a couple weeks or something like that. So if you bring all of their ends up equal like this and try to think equally what's going on, and you kind of stretch your imagination a little bit, like they all become of equal length. Whether you've got the mayor, or the mayor, and every time I try to do this, I always then end up with a short length and a medium.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We're gonna have people lining up to come to these meetings if you want. Show's not quite over.
The show must go on.
We'll go on to the opportunity for those of you here in the audience that would like to stand and address the city council. No magic tricks are required, but for any items that are not on tonight's agenda, if you'd like to address the city council, now's an opportunity to do so. Please come forward. Seeing none, that want to come forward and make a comment to the city council? Nope. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda includes the minutes from the October 11th, 2021 city council meeting and claims for city operations. Is there anything to be pulled by the citizens? Staff? Questions or concerns from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Thompson and seconded by councilperson Gurley. If I could have a vote, please?
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And we'll be making our way on to, to new business. I'd appreciate it again, since we're trying to prepare to have our council meetings streamed, if everyone could wait for or ask for the chair's recognition prior to commenting so you can be introduced, so it'll be able to be recognized on the, on the video. I appreciate it. Moving on to item number one, the presentation and acceptance of the 2020 audit and the 2020 single audit. Yeah? Push the button.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Brian Holst with Alan Giggs and Hulick, the city's auditor, and he will present the 2020 audit and 2020 single audit.
All right. I didn't know there was gonna be magic first. I might have found somebody else to, to do this instead. I think audits are definitely not exciting, and so following that up is probably not gonna be fantastic for me. But what we're here to talk about tonight, there were three things that we issued as part of our audit. They were the governance letter, the financial audit, and then a single audit this year, which you haven't had recently. So I was just gonna go through those three things, and then if you have any questions, we can kind of go over that. So first, I was gonna talk about the governance letter, which includes most of the things that our audit standards require that we communicate to you. And while I'm not gonna go through them all in detail, I did want to point out a few of the things that are in there, just to bring your attention to them. The first one is on the bottom of page one, which lists new standards that were implemented during the year. And so this year, GASB statement 84 was required to be implemented, which essentially changed the way you treat some of your, what was used to be agency funds, but now we're called custodial funds. And really what happened with that is the funds that you were previously reporting that way had to be classified differently this year. And so on page 50 of your financial statements, there's a summary of what those changes looked like, where some of those old funds are now being reported, and how they're showing up in your financial statements. Also on page one of the governance letter, we list that we did not find any unusual transactions during the year, which is always good news. Then page two talks about several of the estimates that are significant to the financial statements and goes through the procedures that we perform as part of the audit and how some of those estimates are generated. And again, won't go through those, but did want to point out that they are there. Also, on page two at the bottom lists out the adjustments that we found as part of the audit, and then also indicates that there were no unposted adjustments that came up. So then after that section is really where it goes into more of our best practice type suggestions and audit findings, and then concludes with some of the new GASB standards that are coming out over the next few years, along with just some other sort of best practice suggestion type things. So with that, any questions on that particular letter before we move on? Okay. The next item is the financial statement, which is the, the biggest of the three things that we provided. Really there, the, the main goal is to ensure the city's compliance with laws and regulations, make sure that internal controls are functioning adequately, and then also to make sure that your financial statement reflects the books and records of the city. So again, without going into a lot of detail on the report, the, the main takeaway from that is that we did issue an unqualified opinion, which I know doesn't sound very fancy, but since auditors aren't exactly known for fancy language, that's the best opinion you can get, which again is good news. So with that said, I think the major difference between this year and last year was what we already talked about a little bit with the implementation of GASB 84. So I didn't have anything else specifically that I wanted to go through on the financial statements, but again, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any.
Very good.
Nothing? Okay. And then the last thing is the single audit report, which again is new this year for you. You wouldn't have had this last year. And really, expending more than $750,000 of federal awards is what triggers that requirement. And so while the city gets several smaller grants on an annual basis, it was really the CARES funding that you received as part of the COVID pandemic that triggered that. So that was about $780,000 by itself, which was therefore the, the major program that we tested. And similar to the financial statement audit, we didn't have any findings, so it was an unmodified opinion for that program as well.
Very good.
So with that, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. I want to thank Tilly for all of her help in going through the audit. We certainly can't do it ourselves, and having the cooperation of the city and their staff goes a long way towards getting our audit completed. So unless you have any other questions for me, that was all that I had.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, one question?
Tom Stevens.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. On the, the third report, you mentioned about the material weakness that you found. And what I was gonna ask is, on the, that involved the Public Housing Authority. Did that, did that issue potentially, could that be found in other parts or strictly going to be only strictly for the housing authority?
So that particular part was just strictly for the housing authority. Essentially, the, the city invests the money on behalf of the housing authority, and so in keeping track of that internally, there's a fund at the city that has those dollars in it, but those dollars also have to be reported on the housing authority. And prior to this year, it essentially was reported in both spots. So that's what that was.
If everything goes right, the housing authority will be going away. I just didn't know if that was an issue they had to be worried about from other departments.
No, I, I think it was unique to, to the situation there where the city's investing some of those dollars on behalf of the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Very good. Nothing else?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Anything additional to add, other staff, questions or comments from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the 2020 audit and the 2020 single audit.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, comments now, string down here.
It was extremely thorough. I appreciate it all the time and effort you guys put into it. And it was, I was thrilled to see that Bonner came out on the positive side.
We're accustomed to this high level of financial integrity, and I appreciate it so much. It's, it's comforting to us, and it's something that I wish the whole community was more aware of. If anyone has any concerns at all, I invite them to look at this information. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Onto item number two, the waiver from general, generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP, or financial reporting. Yeah?
Tilly L. Plant, Finance Director. This resolution that we're asking to be approved is to waive the city's requirement of generally accepted accounting principles and report rather on a, in compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas. There's several cities in Kansas that do adopt this practice. As you saw from the audit report and the governance letter, GASB is, every year has several new regulations. And GASB really is reporting on longer-term liabilities and, and assets where a cash basis, which is what we monitor our financials throughout the year and on a budget basis, is how we pretty much operate till the end of the year, and we have to post GASB adjustments to get the thick report that you get each year with the audit. So I reached out to our financial advisor to make sure that this, he wouldn't impact our bond rating, and he didn't think it would, and also our bond advisor to make sure there were no bond requirements for GAAP accounting. And there weren't. I also reached out to our auditors, and they thought that that was probably a good move. Like I said, a lot of smaller cities with smaller staffs, and it's actually more, I think, readable for the general public and council than some of the financials that you saw in the audit. So we're suggesting this is a waiver that we would need to get approved each year. The one thing that, and Jonathan with Brian's office is checking, is to see if because the Public Housing Authority is gonna be on our books through June of this year at least, whether we're able to do the waiver, but as long as that... Okay. So I think we're okay because they will be not on our books at the end of the year. So we're requesting to, to prepare our financials beginning in 2021 on the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas. And those are still audited. They're just audited in accordance with K-MAG, Kansas Accounting and Auditing Municipal Guide. So they're still audited financials. It's just a different basis of accounting. And I entertain any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff comments? Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution waiving the city's compliance with generally accepted accounting principles for financial reporting and causing such reports to be prepared in compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Reeves. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
Down here.
And this is quite common with smaller cities? Just a weird thing to waive the general accounting principle?
Yeah, I think a lot, there's a lot of adjustments, and in fact, you know, back when the auditors did a lot, before GASB started passing all these new, lots of different things, I think, to... To me, the city kind of operates on a year, we raise taxes to fund our budget year. And the, the GAAP accounting is more posting long-term liabilities and things that really are more business-oriented to me, and I don't know, Brian, if I'm speaking out. And so, yeah, there's a lot of cities. I went on and looked, Edersville, Pale, Tongi, Independence, Iowa, Lewisburg, Edgerton, Garnet, and so a lot of the smaller cities, it takes a lot of staff time to post all of those that, like, like I say, in the end, I'm not sure that it's really beneficial for the amount of work. There's also actuariales you have to do to say how much your retirees on health insurance actuarial value is to put on the books. And so just a lot of things that I don't think with, with smaller cities that have the staff to keep up with all of those and post them for a benefit that I'm not sure it's, anyone's really using.
And the bond council said it has not anticipated that it will change the impact of the city's bond. Were they very comfortable with that?
Well, they're not the rating companies, but he did reach out to an analyst. I think what they said was, "We look at healthy fund balances. They wanna know that you're able to make your bond payments," so...
Thank you.
Hi. Well, the bottom line, it is anticipated that there will be savings in annual audit cost, actuarial cost, as well as staff time. That's really neat.
Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please?
Voting on a motion to approve a resolution waiving the city's compliance with generally accepted accounting principles for financial reporting and causing such reports to be prepared in compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas. Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your hard work and professional input. Onto item number three, ordinance approving a franchisee's agreement for United Fiber Networks LLC. Yeah?
Good evening. Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. We have an ordinance to approve a franchise agreement with Unite Private Networks for fiber telecommunications services. This is really similar to the one in 2018 that we did for Verizon. This is a two-year term, and it automatically renews for four additional two-year terms. So altogether, the agreement can span about ten years. That's pretty standard for franchise agreements. They're typically ten-to-twenty years agreements. There's not a whole lot that changes during that time span. And the franchise fee for this agreement is the standard 5% of gross receipts. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other staff input, questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving a franchise contract for United Private Networks LLC.
Second. So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll ask for questions and comments. We'll start right here.
Down here.
I was curious on this, is this, this is only for government use, right? This isn't any of the private stuff?
So this particular one, or this service provider, this is actually the unified government's entity that's building out their fiber network. So it's not to say that it couldn't be used for private use someday, but it's predominantly being put in to serve public purposes. Unlike, say, in AT&amp;T, which is, you'll actually be having a franchise agreement with AT&amp;T probably at the next council meeting, and that is obviously for private, public, commercial use. use. But again, this one is this is specific to the unified governments built out of their fiber network trunk.
Is AT&amp;T whom we've seen installing and putting up the orange stuff right now?
By and large, I think that's who's all out there.
It's AT AT&amp;T, and they've been out there too. You know, Private Networks has been out there. They're subcontractors.
Okay. In the United Fiber Network Agreement, I was noticing that it mentioned that strands can be sublet or whatever to AT&amp;T or even other entities. Do we have any agreements or numbers on that before it's solidified?
We we don't right now. The Unite Private Networks, as as you noted, was just they only do business schools and government. But they do have the ability, since the infrastructure is there, they can sell part of the dark fiber cables that are there to other fiber companies. A lot of them like to have their own lines, but they have the ability to sell. And then those companies would be able to provide private residential service.
Okay. Have they included the grounds of where the school is going to be built, the college that we're doing, the arts college? Have they already started laying fiber? Is that part of their plan?
I don't know that the loop goes over there.
This, well, it does. So the UPN is put in, basically, it went all the way to the hub down in KCMO, went through Wyandotte County, pretty much following State Avenue, went out to roughly the Speedway, and now it has continued down State Avenue to the amphitheater is where it's dead. And so it's not built out in that particular area, but it's it's there should somebody want to hook up to it pretty easily.
Okay, so it will be there when they start construction?
Yeah, it's it's already there.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Want to make sure it's in the dirt or at least going in the dirt before we can't negotiate anymore. Thanks, guys. Appreciate all you do, Amber.
No, yes, ma'am?
Is this the same line that the potential additional CARES Act funding will tap into and continue down into downtown Bonner?
Yeah, so this this franchise agreement originally, again, was was precipitated by those conversations of the UG getting the CARES Act money to build out their network. Again, right now, it goes down down State Avenue roughly to the amphitheater. There was some struggle with getting some right of way permits along K-7. I believe it goes down through K-32 from Edwardsville going this direction. So the intent would be at some point in time, pending the plans staying the same they were, you know, eight months ago, would be to go, I believe it's up 134th Street, and then kind of back around up to State Avenue that way, loop down through Nettleton, you know, and then it's over to Kump in 138th Street. It's it's a maze, but it would cover a good portion of Bonner if it if it's built out the way that they intended it to be.
Anything else? Other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote, please.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance approving a franchise contract for United Private Networks LLC. Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Digital age, we're in it. That's right. Onto item number four, an intergovernmental service agreement with Lenexa and Olathe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Justine Speeze, Recreation Manager. This is better. There we go. Okay. I'm a little bit taller. I'm sorry. So this, before we tell you the intergovernmental service agreement with both Lenexa and Olathe. Last year, it was just Lenexa. There was some interest by Olathe to join just our long extended trips. So we were like, heck, yes, come on board. So there's no major changes to the agreement that we did last year. They just updated some things, obviously, to include Olathe. And then also the minimum requirements for what we expect for those trip guides, which would be our staff. And there'd be one staff from each city going on these trips. CPR certified, you know, helping load and offload luggage if needed and all that fun stuff. But on the back of the agreement is all the trips that we have planned out for this upcoming 2022 year. And we're very excited for it. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other comments from other staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve entering into the service agreement with the cities of Lenexa and Olathe.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? And I think we'll start on this side.
Justine, I just wanted to thank you for all that you're doing. I think you, next to Mrs. Wood, you're probably the second most volunteered person in this city, which is greatly appreciated. And I also appreciate all your your invites. I don't get to attend all the events, but they're noticed and I appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Shannon? No, that's okay. No? Ma'am?
Those trips look fascinating.
Yep.
Nothing more?
Just real quickly, it appears from even though you've had the challenges of pandemic last year, it looks like it was successful, though. It did provide some additional opportunities that maybe not would not have occurred. And I see because of that, I guess that's why Olathe decided to come on board as well. Good to hear. Thank you.
Nothing here.
Good. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve entering into a service agreement with the cities of Lenexa and Olathe. Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. And have fun on the trips. Next item, ordinance concerning to adopt the standard traffic ordinance 2021 edition. Steph?
Chris Brake, City Clerk. Annually, we adopt the standard traffic ordinance and also the Uniform Public Offense Code. Those were sent to the city attorney who reviewed them and reviewed the ordinance that is set to be published upon approval. So no major changes. We did not adopt a new standard traffic ordinance in 2020 because there were no changes. So we're upgrading from 2019 to 2021. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other staff? Citizens? Professional law enforcement representatives? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the standard traffic ordinance 2021 edition as amended.
Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Reeves. We'll start with questions down here with Mr. Reeves. Sure?
Down here.
No.
No other questions, concerns, comments? We'll have a vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number six, ordinance to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code 2021 edition.
Chris Brake, City Clerk, again. Same situation. We're upgrading from the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code. And again, the city attorney reviewed the code that is issued by the League of Kansas Municipalities and approved it as with the same amendments that we've had previously.
Very good. Other staff? Questions or concerns from the citizens? Law enforcement representative? No? Had the opportunity. Seeing nothing, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code 2021 edition as amended.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
What exactly is included in the Public Offense Code? Which offenses? Types of offenses?
Yes.
No, just like what what categories are we in?
Be able to address that?
Oh, okay. So like no Facebook or like Twitter stuff, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not seconding a motion that I'm going to be in front or coming back on me. Just a side joke. I'm just being facetious.
Sure?
Nothing.
Seeing nothing else, vote, please.
Voting on a motion to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code 2021 edition as amended. Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes, I will.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto the next and last item, the Government Services Center substantial completion. Steph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is is kind of a double barrel kind of issue. You've got three change orders in front of you, three because there are three project phases included in this. One is the city hall portion. One is the city hall addition. And then the other one, the last one, is the police department. Again, that was done to ensure that we were separating out historically our historic tax credit eligible expenses and itemizing those so that we can maximize or recoup those in credit form. We've listed all the change orders. There are several with copious amount of information related to all of them. Dana is here with SFS. We have Joel and Dennis with KBS as well. If there's any specific questions related to any of those, there are a few that I've listed that are not being recommended for approval. The reasons for that are listed there in bold. And then lastly, as part of this, is a substantial completion. Now that we are occupying the building and have come through, come into the building and, again, being substantially complete, it's a formality at this point to sign off on that so that we can begin the process of maintenance and warranty periods and the like. So again, that's the other portion of this item. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail. If there's any specific questions, we're happy to answer any of those if you have any. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff? Reserve the right to ask questions as necessary. Citizens that have concerns or questions? Seeing none. Now, I would entertain a motion for something we can put on the table to discuss.
You have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Please. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and stating your name. And there's a button right at the bottom of that. There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Rusty Simon, one of the smaller contractors that were here, Plaster Works. I didn't ask these guys to come to the meeting or anything. I told them I may show up or may not show up to this meeting. I do think it's a little silly. We're talking about a substantial completion in a building that we've been in. You folks have been in for four to seven months. I don't know what the holdup is to give in a substantial completion to pay these guys. But ultimately, it really does hurt me when I've, you know, it's not just them or the one key to it, but I've got several general contractors that have problems that pay me. And I'm to the point of I've run out of loan sharks and about ready to start losing fingers at this point. I honestly wouldn't have let you in this building without a substantial completion or turning these keys over to let you in a building. But here we're in a building and we're talking about substantial completion. I just think it's odd that that's where you're at and we're talking about change orders into a building that you've moved into. But that's my piece on it.
Well, thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to stand and speak to the city council? No one else? Now I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve change orders 29, 30, and 31, and authorize the city manager to sign substantial completion of the Government Services Center project.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Mackey. Questions, concerns, comments? And we can start down here with Mr. Reeves.
Yes, there's several of these, I guess I just don't understand. Why, I understand what you're going. I appreciate your comments. I really do. Okay. But for instance, installing hard ceiling room 115, I, why wasn't that in on the initial bid? I guess is the question I'm asking. Same thing on several of these. It looks to me like it should have been. I know from my experience in building, you know, it was up to me to make sure that was in there before. And if it wasn't, if it was anything there that was supposed to be a finished area and it's not finished, then I'd have to pay for it.
For that particular room, it was installed as a drop ceiling. It was at the request of the police department that it be installed as a hard ceiling. So that was what was included in the initial bid was a drop ceiling. So this was a change to add to make it into a hard hard ceiling.
Okay, understand that, too. If it's if it's things that we said we want, that's fine. If it's other than that, I have questions about those. And it looks like it's, like you say, looks like it's too late to do too much about it. Am I right or wrong?
I, what would you be wanting to do?
I'm looking for one of them in particular. I saw one of them for $100 for grass.
I think that was a credit, if I remember correctly.
Credit? $130? $130.
$130. Yeah, so that was a credit of, yeah, so there is a mix here of credit and add-ons. So there are
And, okay.
Three or four credits.
Another one that kind of hit me was for additional stone cores at the bottom to meet grade. Things like that have hit me, like that should have been something initially. Much like I felt like anything that had to do with asbestos, we'd give them a couple of months to research that and look through the whole thing. And we still got excuses why they couldn't do it. And I just disagree with that kind of thing. But, you know, as well as the police department down there, there's a, you can't come out of that one garage door without making a right turn because of the way the curb's set up, because of there, I believe it's a generator that's in the way. Those things like that were poor design should have been taken care of or something. It looks to me like something we're probably going to have to do on our own. It's just ridiculous. But anyway, I don't know. Thank you. That's it.
I had some of the same questions, but I think we've covered it.
In change request 136, what is a gyp ceiling? That they're going to install a gyp ceiling in the police?
Probably gypsum board, I would think. So it's just, yeah, drywall.
All right.
Sean, did we get the concrete issues fixed? I know you and I had done a walkthrough one time. There was some of the dips in the, I think, by the police station, the buttons to get into the garage.
Yeah, and maybe this might address the gentleman's question that came up and spoke as well. But the reason that we've held off on substantial completion is that it triggers warranties and maintenance periods. There's a lot of incomplete work still going on. I think the police department is totaling around $200,000. I think the Police Department is totaling around $200,000 of incomplete work over there. This building has about $100,000 roughly, I believe, there. So there are several items. The, the concrete, I think, is still one that we're still working through. There's also the focal wall at the Police Department that is of issue. Security cameras are still something that we're revising, trying to get done. So there's a volume, I think I included a list, it may not be in total though, of again, some significant outstanding items that still need to get addressed.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to double check on that.
Yep.
And I, sir, I just wanted to mention, I appreciate your comments. I've been in construction for about 15 years and I understand the frustration. So appreciate you talking and at least, at least voicing your, voicing your thoughts. As well as KBS, I wanted to thank you guys for the video. That was pretty cool. And my son was in it and I'm going to tear up a little bit, but it was a pretty cool video. I really appreciated it.
Nothing else? Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve change orders 29, 30, and 31, and authorize the City Manager to sign substantial completion of the Government Services Project. Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you, all of you, the contractors as well as all the subcontractors, as well as architects, and appreciate, this is a 100-year-old building that we've added on to and built right beside. And recognizing that's not something that's done every day, not an excuse, but just one of the reasons of many that things take a little more TLC. And we'll appreciate the level of attention of not only the subcontractors and contractors, everyone involved. I know we are as anxious, the city of Bonner Springs is as anxious as anyone could be to utilize this treasure in Bonner Springs. So that's part of the reason we've accommodated some of these timeframes to be as amenable as possible. So thank you very much. Yes, please?
I have an industry question. Does signing off on the substantial completion allow the process of paying the contractors to move forward then?
For undisputed amounts of money. So again, the, that's why I made mention of the outstanding items is that if there are items that are still outstanding after this 30-day period, which will now be triggered with substantial completion, we would hold back that money until such time as it's complete, or we will complete it ourselves and utilize that money to do so. So I think in total, our retention is 5% of the total project, is that right? So that's what we're holding back. And again, I think everybody is working towards correcting all of those issues within that timeframe. So it shouldn't be an issue, but again, that would be after, and that's up to, I think, KBS too, in terms of when they want to release money to their subcontractors. Again, we hire the contractor, we don't hire the subcontractors.
Understood. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. On to reports this evening, the first report, the City Manager's report. Sean?
Just a couple of things. The Leagues, Kansas League of Municipalities, they're having their upcoming legislative dinners. That's on, do I have a date on here, Chris? There we go, November 30th. So at the end of the next month, if you would like to attend that, please get with Chris. There is a dinner as well as some optional training that day for elected officials. I think we've had a few people attend in the past, so I know it's a worthwhile endeavor. Want to note, Council's all aware of it because I think, well, it had to come before you all, but Medline has recently been announced as a new company coming to Bonner Springs. So that'll be located off of Riverview and 110th Street. In total, that's about an $80 million investment, as well as I believe about 250 jobs, 150 jobs relocating from KCMO, and then 100 new, new jobs going into, again, that, that new industrial park up there. I did want to note, did have the opportunity to get back with the Chamber of Commerce last week at one of their weekly, or excuse me, monthly luncheons. A new company coming in downtown, the Wonky Dot. I'm sure several of you have probably heard about it, but they did get some notoriety in the recent past with some of their products under a different, different group, Fancy Your Fanny, I believe is what it was called. But again, that is set to open up in the first part of November. So a neat little company with a lot of, a lot of great stuff. Also want to bring up that we did have a meeting with the Unified Government, I believe it was today, to discuss the Loring area and that transfer of services, at least in the public work side. So that is ongoing. Bring that up because the county will be doing the pavement condition index. If you recall, that's something that the Council elected to do a couple of years ago. The PCI, which is how we've gone through and, and selected streets and made those, made those investments in our street infrastructure. The county is actually going to be doing that, or the UG will be doing that countywide. So that'll be updated data for us to, to compare and benchmark from what we've done and what we can do moving forward. So that'll actually be complete April timeframe. So I'm not sure if it'll influence our street selection for 2022, but will be going on. Yes, sir.
You said that a unified government is doing that countywide?
Correct, yeah. So if you recall, they actually, we elected to do it about a month before the last go-around. So this has been five years ago roughly. The county actually did it about two months after that. So this time, we're cooperating a little bit more and using our resources the best we can. And then lastly, just want to bring note to Parks and Rec, Justine. We have the Halloween story trails going on over Saturday, so the 30th. That's from 5:00 to 7:00, so along the path, the walking trail between South Park and Lions Park. Good event for kids to get out there, read a story. And then I think we've got a lot of local vendors, our local companies, sponsors participating in that. And then lastly, that same day, if you want to see, I'm just imagining my dog trying to get dressed up in a costume. But the farmer's markets last day is, or last day of the season, I should say, is on Saturday. So they are coupling that with a, a dog show dress-up event. So again, if you want to see some dogs in uncomfortable clothing, please come on down to that. And with that, I think that is all I have this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Sean. We'll go ahead and ask for City Council items and we'll start down here with Councilman Shannon.
Tilly? Thank you for all you do, really. Justine, Amber, it's, list goes on and on. But year after year after year, we look at these, the audits and stuff and it's, I can't say enough good about it and what you and all the rest of the staff do. Thank you. Justine, again, like the stuff that's coming in Recreation Center, it's just, it's great. Amber, thanks for answering all my questions. You do good. That's it.
Had the pleasure of going to the Ag Hall induction ceremony for Charles or Pat Roberts' fellow 420 birthday and the 800 billion Farm Bill sponsor that legalized hemp and the industrialization of it. As a side, I wanted to thank Danny Gurley for helping me pick out a, a new kilt at the Ren Fest. I was going to wear it to the ceremony, but I figured I should probably try my very best to present a little bit more professional image for Bonner. And then I was actually shocked and amused that Roger Marshall showed me up. He walked in looking like Prince in a purple suit. It was out of respect for people like this when he wore it because Senator Roberts was a graduate of K-State. So they threw out the go-cats jokes and that's why he wore his purple. I, I thought it was pretty cool that each one of the gentlemen, the Senators, Roberts, Marshall, and Moran, all threw out a thank you and a mention to their wives. I, I was very appreciative to have gentlemen leading our state that are, are willing to do that and acknowledge their partners. And I, another one of my comments is I wanted to remind everybody, there's an election coming up. If you guys weren't aware, it's my Super Bowl season event, November 2nd, 2021. Please go out and vote. Your votes do legitimately matter. And one of the reasons I try to beat this home and remind people is Mr. Shannon was actually showing me Soptix Mailer and he specifically mentioned Bonner Springs on that. And the reason for that is because we have hit it home. Bonner Springs is a gem. We're going, Wyandotte County is going to soon, or at least within the next 10 years, be the entertainment capital of Kansas is our, not even our goal, but it's where we're leading to. Bonner Springs alone has over $2.4 billion slated for the next 10 years, at least that I've heard of from different individuals, either wanting to come to Bonner or be near Bonner. So please go and vote. We are actually looked at nationally, and I know this for a fact because I've received special mail and things from Washington due to some of the stuff that I'm doing. So your votes in Bonner Springs matter. I mean, we do have the power of the DOT, but Bonner Springs is a very hefty voice in the state. With that, I wanted to mention, I had a call with Tyrone Garner today, and that man is extremely dedicated to unifying YCO. Not just Bonner Springs, not just Edredsville, not just KCK, but he was, we talked for about 15 minutes today about some of the comments on Facebook and some different things. And God bless him, that man's trying and he's, he's got a lot of hope for actually unifying all three cities and making sure everybody has a voice. I've also talked to Burrows, Soptic, and Stites, and they've all given me verbal confirmations that they're on board for the same plan and making sure that Bonner Springs and Edredsville are having a legitimate seat at the table for the first time in probably 30 years. That's the end of my diatribe, but please go vote. It does legitimately matter. Thank you, guys.
I want to join with Roger and say thank you, the entire staff of Bonner, all of you, all of y'all. Can't, we just can't say it enough. Thank you for what you all do, Sean, from, and Tilly, and again, another good audit. Congratulations and good job, y'all. Proud of what y'all do. And the first responders.
Yes, thank you, workers, because you make it work. I mean, that's simple. And when we pay attention to the, the people in Bonner, the BPW wanted me to thank you because they felt so honored with that proclamation.
Happy to do it.
So they were.
Nothing from me?
I was going to ask Mr. Peterson about, you mentioned about the roads and they're going to start testing those again. It reminded me that I did have an individual from the Loring service area. I realize that it's not the city of Bonner Springs, but many of the individuals that live down there seem like they have a closer relationship with representatives here in Bonner than they do with UG elected officials. And they were expressing the disappointment in the way those roads are looking. So I didn't know if we could continue to put some pressure on the UG to spend some of those public work dollars from the, you know, from the Unified Government, Wyandotte County dollars down in that Loring service area.
Yeah, I, I think through this process of transferring Loring back to the county, that's been something that we've been very diligent and very matter-of-fact with them is to ensure that, one, the services are uninterrupted, but also to stress that the services needed out in Loring are no different than the county's obligation across the whole, the whole area. I think that the PCI will certainly lend itself to that conversation as far as saying, okay, where does this actually fit in the continuum of, you know, good versus bad? So again, that should be wrapped up in the first part of, of April of next year. So once we have that information, I think we'll have a little bit more understanding and appreciation for what, what we can do moving forward.
Let's keep the pressure on downtown. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, I agree with what Tom said about those roads out there. I travel those quite frequently and they do need lots of attention, not that way. Question for Sean, we, I've been noticing that they've been working on the lawn around our buildings. What's kind of the schedule or the prognosis for that happening? And we actually end up with a finished product on that at what point, I guess?
Dennis, Joel, do you want to answer that? I don't know what their schedule is, so that would.
Would you mind coming up to the?
The last planning date is the end of this month, so by the end of the month, they'll have all the planning in.
Okay. You're still expect it to grow this season, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I guess that answers that question. My, I do think we have a beautiful building here. I thank all the workers that have worked on it, all the subcontractors. The, they've done a good job. The architects evidently did a pretty good job getting those out so that, you know, you knew what to do. The engineers, maybe not quite so much because we've had some shortcomings there, I feel. But all in all, I think things have worked out fairly well, but like I say, there's been some problems. And I, I would say it's from the engineering portion of the project that those problems have come up from. I do want to thank Tilly for everything that you've done. You make us look good, Tilly. Thank you. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Good, sir?
Real quickly, Heather, thank you. That thing from the Bonner Police, every week, it is great. Didn't mean to leave you out, but I look forward to it. And I think one of the best things is, is you're letting everybody know exactly what you folks are facing. And you put a sense of humor in there, which is great at particular times. But it, it shows exactly, tells everybody what they don't know and how much stuff you folks are faced with on a daily basis. And I think it's, I think it's great and you, you do a good job, hon. Thank you so much.
Very good. Nothing else. Just so I won't, in the mayor's report, repeat everything that's been said before. All the accolades that have been given, I agree with. It's great to, people have asked me several times since our last meeting, what's it like to be mayor of Bonner Springs? I said, well, Bonner Springs is a great little town, so it's great to be mayor. And I, I mean that more now than ever. In the last two weeks, I've had an opportunity to travel quite a bit and it, again, just astounds me how much, how, how much Bonner has going for it compared to a lot of small communities across this nation. And it, it's all because of your hard work, so appreciate it. Also had the opportunity to host the Wyandotte County Economic Development Annual, or I'm sorry, quarterly meeting that was here in these chambers, who offered, had tours of the facility. This is a group of individuals that are highly committed to development in and across Wyandotte County, and they were quite impressed with the facility. Thank you, KBS, for helping to sponsor that meeting and being a part of that. It was great to have our professional contractors, our prof, all levels recognized so highly. And the entire community recognize, is starting to recognize what has happened here. We've, we've literally taking, taken an icon in our town and remade it into a purposeful building that will be utilized for, I would imagine, as long as it's been around again. So you can't say that about every commercial building. building. I, I think they'll use the police station for a long time too, but I would imagine this one will outlast it. But it's just my personal opinion. I'm not a contractor by profession. Did also, since the last meeting, have an opportunity to spend some time with the Wyandotte County mayors. We meet, gather together regularly and discuss topics across the county. There's been a lot of issues in both the local and national news. I would just encourage everyone to educate themselves as best as possible on all the topics, especially ones that were in the, the local media today. And it's amazing, the, the preconceived notions and the things that have happened and, and the things that haven't happened. So hopefully we'll all be able to, to work our way through any of the residual damage and injury that results from, from everything that has happened before. So not to belabor that. I don't have anything else to bring before the citizens or the council, unless anyone has questions for me. Again, please be careful on Halloween. Remember, there's a lot of young people out there. Their, their first objective is not being safe. So watch, watch as you come and go. Appreciate the police department taking emphasis on wearing seat belts right now. That actually saves lives. I see it regularly. So please spread the word. There is an enforcement activity going on, on, on seat belts, and would hope there will be no need, but hopefully that, that, the need, there won't be a need because people will be seat belting themselves voluntarily. Seeing no other questions? Stand adjourned.